Welcome to the February 11, 2020 meeting of the Manchester Town Council. Begin with the pleasure of allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We're going to start, I want to recognize, always good to see former Mayor Chris DiMario. He's continuing to help the town out, so we'll see him in a few minutes, but thank you for coming in, always a pleasure. See some new folks that we don't see, happy to have you here. If you'd like to speak or bring something up, of course, there will be a time. Makes it easiest on us if you don't mind signing in, that way we can kind of call folks in order and make sure we don't miss anybody. With that, we'll start to the bar, keeping issues. Approval of the January 14th, 2020 minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the January 14th, 2020 minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is seconded in the discussion, corrections, additions to the minutes. Hearing non-whales in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, then we have receipt of the January 2020 check register.
I'll make a motion that we accept the January 2020 check register.
I'll second that.
Motion is seconded, in the discussion on the check register for January. Hearing non-whales in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mayor DiMario, you want to... I'll put you before brush pickup. So, Mayor DiMario is agreeing to continue to serve on our Board of Zoning Appeals, so we're going to swear you in for another term. Raise your hand if you're aye, state your name.
Aye, Chris DiMario.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and I will be faithful and will bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland and will support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of Board of Zoning Appeals member according to the Constitution and laws of this state.
I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, a couple announcements. Seems like we barely started winter, but we're going to start getting into the February, the spring announcements. First, we are closed here on Monday, President's Day, Monday, February 17th. Brush pickup is right around the corner, that'll start April 14th, so those are the larger items. Remember, you can't exceed four feet in height, four inches in width, and eight feet in length. Please put those so that one end is always towards the curb, helps speed up the guys so that we can get to everybody. Bulk trash, the following day, April 15th. If you have any items, please call Hughes. Then regular yard waste pickup begins Friday, April 3rd, and will continue through November. So those are the smaller items. You can put like even a trash can, a bin, a paper bag, but no plastic bags, so Hughes will not deal with the plastic bags. Finally, Charlotte B. Colette Memorial Scholarship applications are due by May 1st. We have applications here in the Town Hall, they're also at the Guidance Office at Manchester Valley High School. We're going to offer three $1,000 scholarships to Carroll County High School students who have been accepted to a college/university or a Carroll County student currently enrolled in a college/university in a graduate or undergraduate program. Preference will be given to students preparing for a career in government or public service.
Mayor, real quick on that, that's the MML scholarship, that's the three?
Oh, these are two different scholarships.
Sorry.
I was skipping, yeah, no, so we have... Do we determine how many we're giving away this year, or how much?
Right now, we just have one.
Okay.
Which we split in the past.
We have split in the past. Do we know who's on the committee this year? Did we determine that?
No.
Same folks?
If they're up to it, that would be great.
I think you guys have done a good job the past couple of years.
Perfect, thanks.
So, there's two scholarships, the Maryland Municipal League Scholarship and then the Charlotte B. Colette Memorial Scholarship, which is given by the town. So that is all I have, turn it over to the Town Administrator.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the community. We'll go ahead and review the January 2020 Administrative Report. I'll be brief because our agenda is pretty large tonight. Under pending items, the packaged goods store, the anticipated opening is at the end of February or early March. Hopefully, that's this year, so that's going to be opening up soon. The opioid litigation, we have nothing at this time. The Lippi property annexation and the BGE Gas Ascent Agreement are both agenda items. The Whispering Valley Stormwater Management Facility retrofit project, as you may have seen, some HDPE plastic pipe has arrived on site, and the anticipated start date is within three to four weeks, weather permitting. The Trout Unlimited Project at the old Route 27 skate park area, the grading permit application has been signed, and the project is slated to begin in two to three weeks. You have in front of you the monthly code enforcement update under miscellaneous items. Excuse me, I've supplied you with solid waste and recycling comparisons for 2019 and some of the past years. If you look at that real closely, you will see that in 2019, both our solid waste and our recycling numbers have dropped. I cannot explain that. Usually, when recycling goes up, solid waste will drop, but they both drop, so I can't explain that. Over the past month, 16 of our employees were recertified in CPR, AED, and Bleeding Control, and I want to thank MPD Officer Eric Almenes for instructing these classes. Officer Almenes is a certified American Red Cross instructor, so that's a very huge asset to the town and the town employees that he is an instructor, so I want to personally thank him. I also like to recognize and congratulate our wastewater operator Caleb Matthews. Caleb has successfully passed his Maryland State Water Examination, so congratulations to him. Reminder about the Fourth Annual Business Expo to be held on Saturday, March 14th, at Manchester Valley High School, and there may be some other information coming out about that. I will quickly give you a storm update in regards to the storm that rolled through here on Friday. Pretty much, all of our facilities were up and running by Saturday afternoon at 5:00. Our first priority when the storm hit was to make sure the roadways are open and free for emergency traffic. Our folks did a fantastic job on that. Then we had that issue of a pole and transformer down that supplies one of our production wells. We worked very closely with BG&E, we were very happy the way things worked out on that. It was in the worst location you can even imagine. They got us up and running at 5:00 on Saturday afternoon. Our park back here is still closed. We lost seven trees, they're still down. We just can't get back in there because of the wet weather, so hopefully, over the next week or so, we'll get those cleaned up. Currently, the park is closed. That same day, we did close Charlotte's Quest Nature Center. I was in contact with the folks down there, and then we reopened that up on Monday morning, so that is open. We also lost a tree at Postal Park and another tree off of Route 27 at the old skate park location. All in all, it was very dangerous, nobody got hurt, all the groups worked well together, so I'm pretty happy with that, but it was pretty intense there for about 45 minutes, so everything went well, so that's it. Any questions for me?
Steve's curious, the Weather Service did say that EF1 tornado touched down in Manchester. Anybody got any pictures or videos of that?
We have pictures of the damage. I could check with our folks to see if anybody took care of any videos. Yeah, they were hunkered down, and you know, but it just happened, it passed through so quick, you know, and then things calmed down enough that you could see what damage was done. I mean, we had some trees on houses, Hilltop Drive, that area, the pole snapped in place, we had trees out in the street, so yeah, but all in all, I didn't recall hearing any injuries, so that was a good thing.
No, Alboril was pretty messed up.
Alboril, Old Ford Schoolhouse, out in that general area. The report I got was that it started in the New Windsor area, and you could hear the fire calls coming in, and then actually, it lifted for about a three or four mile stretch and then come back down again, and yeah, but actually, south of Manchester and north of Manchester, it wasn't too bad, you know, I'm talking about town areas. It was just like the center of town, it's just, yeah, so.
Any other questions, Town Administrator? So I handle the action items, I guess, when we get to the agenda.
Yes, correct.
All right, Chief?
Yep. So for January 2020, we handled 137 calls for service and response to complaints, 29 of which were out of town, assisting Hampstead and other areas. We had zero Part 1 crime for January. We did conduct other investigations resulting in four persons being criminally charged. We ended 2019 having 13 Part 1 crimes in comparison to 14 in 2018 and 59 in 2013. So we were definitely heading in the right direction, and I got to thank the community for that. The clearance rate averages right around 94%, so pretty much, when we get a theft, we normally clear the theft. Thank God, it's usually petty thefts, so that's even better, there's really been nothing major. For 2019 totals, we had one robbery, that was a sheet store. There was a crew out of Washington DC. They hit a bunch of locations in Baltimore, then they hit a bunch of locations in Carroll County, and then they were subsequently apprehended back in DC. In comparison, in 2018, we also had a robbery at Sheetz, but that was on a parking lot, and that was drug dealing related, and we arrested both suspects for that. We had one burglary in 2019 in comparison to four in 2018. We had 10 simple assaults, which is hand, fist, feet, that type of stuff, in comparison to 14 in 2018. We had a huge increase in domestic assaults. We had 11 in 2019 in comparison to two in 2018. And our thefts, we had 11 in comparison to nine in 2018, and we had zero auto thefts, but one in 2018. Overdoses, we had a decent decrease. We ended the year with 434 in comparison to 513 in 2018. Fatalities, we ended the year in 55 versus 71 in 2018. For the municipalities, Hampstead ended the year with 11, they had 12 last year. We had six, we had eight last year. Sykesville had four, they had five last year. Tonty Town had 34 versus 35 in 18. Westminster had 145 versus 186 in 18, and Mount Airy has 21, there's no 2018 data. So far in 2020, Manchester hasn't had any. There's been 33 total in the county, two fatalities. Hampstead had one, Tonty Town had four, Westminster had eight, Sykesville zero, and Mount Airy three. For traffic enforcement, as I said early on in 2019, we did increase our enforcement. Mind you, it's all complaint-driven, the town gets zero revenue for our efforts. We issued 2,593 citations and warnings in comparison to 901 in 2018, and the complaints are still coming in. So the increased enforcement is definitely going to be on our radar and to the best of our abilities. So far in Jan...well, no, in January, we issued 87, but all in all, I think it's good.
Any questions for the Chief on the police report?
The thorough report.
So our citations and warnings were up almost threefold.
Yes.
2019.
They're definitely on a roll.
Okay.
Oh, hey, can I have one thing?
Sure.
So apparently, any of you own Hondas? Anybody have a Honda vehicle?
Yes.
So there's a crew, right now, they're operating in Howard County. I don't know if they trickled into Carroll County. They're popping the airbags. So Howard County just did a news press conference on it, but apparently, the perps can get in and out with your airbag within like three minutes, and they're just coming into an area, stealing as many airbags as they can and rolling. So, don't know why, I'm sure they're selling them to the shops, who in turn are selling them to the aftermarket, making a profit, and they got a hookup on it.
Unlock cars generally?
Unlock, they have smashed a few, though. But I, you know, just keep your lights on, keep your doors locked. If you have a Honda, I don't know how much you care about your Honda.
It's my waste car, she doesn't need airbags.
But that is a target, and it's only Hondas. So, it's kind of interesting, I'm not sure why they would be, but it is only Hondas.
Okay. Rodney, the Director of Public Works, report.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Please see the Water and Wastewater Data Report for January 2020, and if you have any questions, please let me know. For public, I'm going to start with Public Works tonight. I also want to congratulate Caleb Matthews on passing his MD water treatment Class 3 exam. He is now a licensed operator for water and wastewater, so shout out to him for doing a great job with that. We had, our field staff had their, we had our bi-monthly safety training, again, that was for our field staff, and that was presented by Chesapeake Employers Insurance Company, and January's topic was bloodborne pathogens, pathogens. Also, I want to thank Officer Eric Almenes for his CPR, AED, and first aid training, and that was for all town employees, and that was January 13th. And also, for Public Works, we also have begun our 2021 budget process. For water, we had one water leak on the private side, that was on Chancy Drive, no water leaks on the public side. On the Park Avenue Water Tower Rehab, construction permit approval and bid specifications are nearing completion, and I expect this to go out to bid spring of this year. Our Delwell Generator replacement is status quo from last month. We're still working with BG&E on the feasibility of getting gas, natural gas to that location. Our water meter replacements and radio read additions has been a work in progress all through January. We had a failed well pump at our Crossroads 2 Water Station that was replaced on the 22nd of January, and that was a seven and a half horsepower pump, and that was done by an outside contractor. Wastewater, we had no sewer backups on the private side, one on the sewer side, oh, I'm sorry, one on the public side, and that was on Works Avenue. The wastewater treatment plant, ENR upgrade and optional expansion, our agreement and amendment and contract is ready to be ratified upon your approval. I think that's the action item for Steve later.
Correct, it's on the agenda.
The ratified agreement will be included with our information packet, and that will be presented to the State Board for approval to move forward. Parks Maintenance Roads, Stormwater Management Facilities, Town Storm Drain Inlet Repair bids are in, and this is an action item coming up shortly, and it's a total of 15 locations in all, and this includes concrete work, brickwork, various apron repairs, and traffic control is also included. For January, we had two snow and ice events, one was on January 7th in the evening and into the 8th of the morning of the 8th, and one was January 18th, daytime. Back to the action item, for the storm drain repairs, we received two bids. Stamballs Incorporated was $36,252, and Johnson Escavation and Paving, L L S E, was $44,000. So I'm requesting the town's approval to award to Stamballs Incorporated in the amount of $36,252, and this is within budget.
What was the budget figure for that, do you know?
We used a little bit for a prior repair. I think it's in front of you what is left, I think the total budget was $40,000, if I'm not mistaken.
We're working with $36,627 in dollars.
Yeah, that's what's remaining in that.
All right, you guys want to, are there any questions before we move to this action item? Is there a motion on the action item within Public Works?
I make a motion, we go with the staff recommendation to award Stamballs Incorporated the repair of 15 storm drains throughout the town for the amount of $36,252.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is seconded in the discussion. Hearing non-whales in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Anything else for Director of Public Works? Right along.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, the discussion of Ordinance 243, which is the BG&E request for perpetual easement. So this has come up a couple of times. You should have a copy of this. And Steve, correcting if I'm wrong, or Kelly, this is one where the timing was just off, so this has been introduced?
This is actually a new ordinance, and actually, they had originally had this for 50 years, and then they came back and asked for perpetual.
Right. So this is a new ordinance. So this was introduced last month, correct?
Yes, correct.
We received no comments.
Okay. I know public comments later, is anybody here to speak on the BG&E perpetual easement? Not likely, if I'd ask. Hearing non-whales, our motion to approve Ordinance 243 for the BG&E perpetual easement.
I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance 243 for perpetual easement.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is seconded, non-whales in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's good to put that one to bed. Introduction of Lippi Farms Annexation Resolution, number 39-20. Do you want to come up?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice President, members of the council, good evening. My name is Tom McCarron, by way of introduction. I was asked, I'm an attorney and was asked by town staff to work on the Lippi property annexation and number of the documents that you have before you this evening. I'm an attorney with Sems, Bowen &amp; Sems in Baltimore, but I live in Eldersburg, so I'm a Carroll County guy. I'm currently the town attorney for the town of Mount Airy, and also make my way up to Cecil County where I'm the town attorney of Port Deposit, there on the water. Steve had asked that I sort of address this annexation to sort of give you a preview of what process will occur after this. Let me start with sort of what's in your packet tonight, and all of this is, of course, governed by state code. First is my letter simply confirming that the annexation petition, the proposal, meets the minimum requirements under the law, property is contiguous to the town's limits. It would not create an enclave if annexed, it is a part of an enclave already, and thus would reduce the current enclave, but does not create an enclave. And enough petitioners, this one was easy, it's a corporately-owned piece of property, so enough of the petitioners, owners have signed the petition, there are no voters there. The second piece of paper is a verification of that, that I've made this representation to you all, I have the mayor and the vice president signing it so that it can go into the annexation folder. Next is the annexation resolution by state code. After a petition is received, what is supposed to happen is an introduction, at least in draft form of a resolution, which it is on the agenda tonight for introduction. At that point in time, it would be referred, as a matter of course, to the Planning Commission. I understand the Planning Commission may have already, or has already reviewed this perhaps substantially. However, the purpose for the referral at this point to the Planning Commission is a couple-fold. One, to ultimately obtain their recommendation to you about, A, whether to annex, and B, the proposed zoning for the property. Now, the Planning Commission could do one of a few things. They could recommend wholesale, not recommend at all, or do something in between, and that is to say recommend, but recommend conditions that you might consider imposing on the annexation, but of course, would make their way into an annexation agreement negotiated with the developer and owner of the property. Now, somewhat in this process as well, and probably after it comes back to see what Planning Commission's comments are, the town staff will be charged with preparing an annexation plan to be presented to you all to ultimately review, comment upon, and approve. That annexation plan essentially takes the form of your municipal growth element section of your master plan. At that point in time, that, along with the other annexation documents, are packaged and sent to commenting agencies. Those would be the Maryland State Department of Planning and also the County Department of Planning. Under the state code, they have to get those 30 days before a hearing. Under the town-county agreement, however, the county has expanded that typically to 60 days, so point is, they get enough lead time to review the materials. At that point, typically, you would also set a public hearing for the annexation. You would want to set that out far enough to receive back the comments from the commenting agencies, as well as to give enough time for staff to advertise this particular annexation. It's just over 25 acres, so we have to advertise it four times, actually, over the period, at weekly intervals. So the point is, you have to set the hearing out far enough to accomplish all of those things before the public hearing. At the public hearing, the agencies, if they appear for the hearing, have the first right to make comment. Typically, in my experience, they will make comment by return letter for you to consider rather than actually appearing at the hearing. At the end of that public hearing, it would be probably appropriate to announce the Town Council meeting at which you all would vote to, you know, vote to approve or not approve, as the case may be, the annexation of the property. Sort of happening, of course, it sounds like this occurs one after the other, but sort of in parallel, there's, and particularly after the public hearing, after you've received both Planning Commission and the public's comments, it would probably be appropriate for the council to direct me and staff as to what you all might want to see in an annexation agreement. So while we're sort of waiting for the final vote, a lot of times at this period, we're negotiating with the developer to see what terms they may demand, what terms the Town Council may demand of the developer to be put into the annexation agreement. Assuming everything goes smoothly there, you'll reach your public meeting, your regular meeting, at which time you will vote to approve or not approve, as the case may be, the annexation proposal. So that's sort of a sketch of the process, it can be as it sounds, rather drawn out, it's not an overnight-type thing, but this is the process that the state code lays out for us.
So do they have any questions for me? Any questions for Mr. McCarron on the process?
Made it very clear, thank you.
Thank you. It was a good summary. Thank you. Okay, so we will sign the petition tonight, and this, my understanding, this goes then goes back to planning and zoning.
Sounds like...
Those are the next two steps.
To introduce, to introduce the, tonight would be introduction of the resolution of the protocol.
Okay. All right, anything else on? On this one, if not, we'll move on. All right. Freedom Wireless, request to run fiber optics to Manchester Baptist Church Road Water Tower.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Teresa Bethune, and I am the local owner of Freedom Broadband. We are an internet service provider that focuses on providing service to people that are not served by cable. So while we do provide service inside Manchester, a lot of our folks are outside of town, and we've been very fortunate to work with Steve and Kelly and the team here as a tenant on the Manchester Baptist Church Road Water Tank for about 10 years. The need for internet bandwidth continues to grow, so we cannot continue to provide service without always upgrading our infrastructure, and in order for us to continue to be commercially viable, using the water tank to provide service to our clients, we need fiber at the tank. To that end, we requested or met with Steve and his team to talk about whether or not that would be something we could pursue. We agreed to a path. So this is going to be one part of me asking permission, one part frankly throwing myself on my sword to ask for forgiveness as well. So we met as a team to say, hey, is this something that the town would entertain? And they said yes, because if we bring the fiber to the tower, it's not our fiber, it's And they said yes, because if we bring the fiber to the tower, it's not our fiber, it's commercial fiber, which means other people can then make use of it as well in the future. Our provider is a large company, I'm not going to call them out in public. So we all agreed to a path, and our provider said, oh, don't worry, we've got a team that works with towns, and we'll go through the process, and we've got it covered, no problem. That was last summer. We went on for months regarding permitting and construction. We're getting, you know, trickle of info from our provider, and the last thing we heard at one point was, we're working to permitting. We said, okay. And then literally out of the blue, we're finding out that they're bringing the fiber into the tank. So, I'm asking your permission, I'm imploring you for your permission, but at the same time, the fiber has been run. There's nothing I can do to stop that, unfortunately. We're a little nat, and they're not. But I am just asking for your permission to make use of that fiber that has been brought to the tank.
If I could add something, Freedom, as Teresa said, Freedom has been a very good tenant. Bringing fiber to the tank opens up a lot of possibilities for the town also, because, you know, we've talked back and forth, different things that we can use. But at the end of the day, they do a very good job in supplying internet service to the areas outside the town that's very much needed. So, you know, unfortunately, it was a surprise to everybody that fiber was run in there, and it's crazy, but it is, and it's done, and, you know, but I want to be, you know, they want it to be, and I want it to be transparent with the mayor and council, and make sure, since it's your property, the town's property, that you are aware of what was going on up there. So I think that, you know, I think if you could, you know, officially give them permission to do that, that would be fantastic, so.
Just out of curiosity, would it, if we didn't?
Well, I guess it would have to be removed.
Frankly, then I'll be paying for a circuit that can't be used. And we are a small business, and I have, we would not be able to sell additional service on the tower, because it's at a point where if we don't have fiber to provide that backhaul, it's, it will become commercially less viable to us, because people's needs are insatiable. I'd love to tell you that people can just, they'll take it and say, okay, yeah, that's fine. If we can't continue to provide more and more bandwidth, then people don't want us, and frankly, we would become commercially unviable.
I was just curious.
No, Steve would tell you, I'm a very transparent person, so that's why I said I'm throwing myself on my sword, because there's nothing more I can do. It's, I'd love to say that everybody followed. We all thought we were following the process, and it was this, this was January 13th, so literally after a six-month period of us thinking that there's this process being followed, it was a surprise. And so that's, that's the situation.
Okay. Thank you.
No, you're welcome, thanks for asking.
Are there any, Steve, any downside to the town, any?
No, we have plenty of room on that tank. There's plenty of room at the bottom of the tank. The control panels are not getting in the way in any way. Kelly and I, and Teresa and Tom, want to review their current lease, and no, there is not. Actually, it's a good thing for the town, and different things that we could use, you know, using that link.
Yeah, opens up additional possibilities, and no issues from a public works perspective?
No. Everything's in cable, cable trays, no issues for the climbers, nothing like that.
Sounds all positive.
Steve, does the town inspect this installation at all?
No. The installation that they, the installation going into the tank is done correctly. We have conduits that come from the outside, from the inside of the tank to the outside, and their, their equipment, the company's equipment...
Not ours, they'll call them the proprietor.
Not their equipment, but the company's equipment stops right outside the tank, it's a pull box out there, and then they ran the fiber optic inside using our conduits that were already supplied, yes.
I'm just curious.
Yes, no damage to the tank, nothing like that, no.
Any other questions or discussion? So do we have a, I'm not sure this has to be a motion, but probably cleaner, do we have a motion to officially grant Freedom Wireless permission to run and use the fiber optics attached to the Manchester Baptist Church Road Water Tower?
I make a motion, we grant permission to Freedom Wireless for running, and running fiber optics to the Manchester Baptist Church Water Tower.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, and a second, another discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, good luck. Steve, I think the next item is yours, discussion of the...
Yeah, you have heard Rodney speak about this over the last several months. We've come to the point now where I want to make you aware, step by step, of what's taking place in regards to the enhanced nutrient removal process at the wastewater treatment plant. So, as you recall, everybody pays the bay restoration fee, or the bay fee. The way the state worked this, a few years back, they started coming into the larger wastewater facilities, a million gallons or more, and started doing upgrades to enhance nutrient removal systems to these different plants. After those plants were completed, or some of them are still in construction, the funding has become available for the smaller plants, similar to what we have. So, we did some investigating, and about a year ago, we met with MDE to lay out the groundwork and in regards to acquiring the grants. And what we did was put out on the street a request for qualifications for qualified engineering firms to do a preliminary report for the town of Manchester. Out of those 10 that responded back, I think it was 10 or 12, our internal team picked five. And we brought them in there, in here, and talked to them, and we went ahead and put it out to bid in regards to putting together a, a engineering services to give us a preliminary report on the ENR upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant. So, after we sat down, after we reviewed, and we had a scoring process that we used, our internal staff come up with the firm of CDM Smith from Lancaster, Pennsylvania. So, we sent all the information to MDE. MD approved everything, they reviewed it, they gave us the green light to move forward with one issue that I had. The issue I had, before the contract can be taken to MDE or the State Board of Public Works, the contract had to be signed. And working with MDE, as many years as I've worked with MDE, I was a little hesitant of signing the contract on behalf of the town, and then all of a sudden, the money and the funding is pulled out from underneath of us. Not that that may happen, but I didn't want to put the town on the hook for that. So, what we did, we had their attorneys, CDM Smith's attorney, draw up a provision in the contract that if this project is not approved by the Board of Public Works of the state of Maryland, it's null and void, we can get out of it. The wording was approved by MDE. We also had our town attorney look at the wording, and everybody agrees, this is an out for the town if the funds are pulled out from underneath of us. So, I'm coming tonight to ask permission, so I can sign the contract, so we can move forward on this project and receive grant funding to do a preliminary, again, I want to come back to this, a preliminary study for ENR upgrade at our wastewater treatment plant, also for expansion, for possible expansion and enhancement at our wastewater treatment plant. Now let me talk just a little bit about this, because I don't want to lead you astray. The grant funding will take care of the ENR upgrade, okay? Any enhancement to the plant, any equipment that's getting old, needs replaced, any expansion of the plant, let's say to go from a half million gallons a day to 750,000 gallons a day, that's on our dime. So basically, if you use the analogy, we have an old car, the state's going to pay to have a brand-new motor put in it, but we have some rust issues, and we have other issues on that car. So I want to make that clear. What this process will tell us, and what this engineering report will tell us, it will give us three things. Our best enhanced nutrient removal system for our population and our current plant size, expansion, and also replacement of equipment. So I want to make that clear. This is in no way saying that we are going to go out there, we are going to build a plant, because there's a lot of things that have to happen before we get to that point. But this is just a preliminary study of what they feel we're going to need. So, that's a lot of information in a short amount of time, and you probably don't understand it, but I tried to make myself as clear as possible, so.
So just to make sure I'm summarizing, and that I'm understanding correctly, the contract is written, so that if the grant money...
Yes.
Is not of it, it becomes, if we aren't awarded the grant money, we have the option to get out?
Yep.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you for doing that.
Actually, the wording is, this is, this is the contract that would be signed with CDM Smith. Approval of this contract is contingent upon the approval of grant funding by the Maryland Department of Environment and the Maryland Board of Public Works. Upon approval of this grant funding, owner shall issue the engineer's notice to proceed. Engineer is not authorized to perform services until receipt of owner's notice to proceed.
Any other questions for Steve?
And you're comfortable with...
Yes, the one thing that I did not mention, the total package, the report is running The background and current lab analysis, that's running $44,839, so the total package for this plan is $105,575. Through a grant. Through the monies that we have, our residents and neighbors have put into the bay restoration fee.
Over a bunch of years.
Over a lot of years, right. I was trying to think how many years, I know it's been a minimum of 10.
Oh, a long time.
Been at least 10.
2005?
So the question was asked, do we keep paying the fee? Probably yes, it's a state law. Actually, one thing that they are doing is they're using some of that restoration money to now take care of operation and maintenance issues of the plants, the larger plants they did like five, six, seven, eight years ago. So they're actually using some of that money to take care of that.
Any other questions for Steve? So Steve, would you like a vote from, from the council?
I would, to make it, yes. I would feel more comfortable with that.
They have a motion?
As fast as I was taking notes, I'm not sure I would know what to make, so...
Just sign the report?
Yeah, how do you want it worded?
Probably a vote to authorize the town administrator to move forward with executing the contract with CDM Smith for a preliminary engineering report contingent on funding from MDE.
I got it all.
I'll make a motion that the town administrator move forward with execution of the Smith Plenary Engineering Report contract for WWTP ENR upgrade.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, another discussion? Anybody want to repeat it? All's in favor, say aye.
Looking over at the town attorney, is it?
Good. I did what I could.
All right, all right, thanks for your work on that, Steve, and we're going to move forward. Kelly, you want to give us a quick...
Sure.
Elevator information talk on these ball field lights?
Yes, so as you know, we've been talking about the ball field lights for many years now, and Steve, feel free to interrupt at any point, because I know we've been talking about it. So, event, what we did was, we have gotten some grant funding through Program Open Space, through Community Parks and Playground, and we are applying for grants from Program Open Space. The, we've already received $85,000 from CPP, and so we went out and we got pricing from at least two companies. One is Musco Lighting for about $310,000, and the other one was, we met with MD Tech, but it's through a company called PD Valley Electric, and their price was about $350. So, one of the things with Musco Lighting is that they are members of a co-op that we are in called Sourcewell, which used to be called NJPA. So one of the things that we're allowed in our charter is to be in a co-op and have that bid for us. So, being a small staff and the types of projects we do, if it can be competitively bid elsewhere, we're able to latch on to that. So that is one of the benefits of Musco. At this time, we need to make a decision, because Department of Natural Resources that has, has the Community Parks and Playground grant, has said, look, you need to do something, you need to spend the $85,000, or it will revert back to us. So I'm asking for you all to consider, in the current budget, we have $300,000 budgeted for the ball field lights, and so we have to make a decision, if not tonight, very soon, what we're going to do with the ball field lights. Are we going to replace them with LED? Or...
The grant money that we received is for replacement, not demolition, correct?
That would be included.
Included, right.
Included in, okay.
I think it's not, if what you're asking is it for solely just like, hey, get rid of these things?
That's what I'm making sure, it's not just, or it's not just put the new ones in, it would cover all of it.
And we strung this out an extra year. We got called to the table last year, and told, hey, you need to move forward with this, or like use it, or we're moving on. My other thoughts, you know, we have aging infrastructure, we just had the storm come through. So we kind of, we need to make a decision about whether or not we're going to continue to provide that to the community. And there's a couple of thoughts, I mean, I have some thoughts, I'd like to see us find a way to do it. So we have grants, we're applying for more through Project Open Space, we have a parks fund that everybody has, that's been paid into over a number of years. I do think we need to hit up some of the users and have a meeting with them about what they can contribute. The rec council, you know, has collected fees from users of it, again, like those bay fees for a number of years for, not necessarily earmarked for this kind of thing, but I think it makes sense to have that conversation with them. So I don't know that we need to vote this in or out, but because of the large nature, tonight anyway, unless somebody feels differently, because of the large nature of this type of capital project, it's probably appropriate to get the discussion out there.
I thought you said we needed to move on it.
I've, just the emails that I've gotten from Program Open Space are saying, look, you know, you guys have maximized your time.
So do you suggest we move on it tonight and accept the bid, or?
I would like to understand rec council's input into this, because they basically have exclusive rights to that field. It's not for the community, it's exclusive to them practically, so I would like to know if they would like to contribute. And they should.
Yeah, I think it's a fair question, I think, I mean, to expect them, I think, to carry the lion's share of it, they just don't have those kind of funds, right?
That's understandable.
Yeah, and there's some shared community benefit, I think, to having it there. You know, continuing to draw folks to the town. But I have no problem having that conversation with them, bringing them either in here or going to their meeting. But, you know, I think in the grand scheme of things, they're probably going to cover some yearly, we'll come with some yearly agreement. You know, I think giving them on the hook for that is a piece of this. I don't know if it makes or breaks it, depending on how much that is.
Yeah, I agree. And I think we're all supporters of the rec council, I just want to know that they have vested interests, I want them to be a big stakeholder, or a stakeholder at least.
I don't want to lose the budget, the money, the grant money that we've already received, and for many years I've been saying something needs to be done, because I have video of the winds blowing them. They're dry, not dry, right, they're hollow, a lot of them are in really bad shape and need to come down, and I have expressed concerns many times that someone's going to get hurt.
Well, they're old, right? So it's, this is an opportunity to, I think, either, we either fix this for the next 30 or 40 years, or we don't.
We have to do something.
We have to do something, yeah.
Friday, my park supervisor said it was like watching a ping pong ball match. Those poles were back and forth. I can't believe they didn't snap. That's how bad they are. We have an issue back there, and we have to move forward as quickly as possible to take care of this issue, where my recommendation is, they got to come down. They have to come down. And I really am probably going to be the most hated man in Manchester, but we have to do something. If one of those lights would fall on a child or a person, that's bad, and we got to do something. So I, if you want a meeting set up, I recommend get that meeting set up as soon as possible. Get some type of, you know, some type of commitment by the rec council, and move this project forward as quickly as possible.
I was just going to ask you, is it feasible to say within the next couple of weeks that we can have a meeting scheduled?
I'd love to, I'd like to do that. I really, I mean...
How much time do we have before we lose our grant money?
That, I mean, they could pull it out from underneath of us right now.
Because they said we're approaching the five-year mark, and that's usually when that happens.
Yeah, we've been going back, you see... Yeah, we've been going back, you see, a council person, yeah, we've been going back and going back and getting these funds, and then other projects that we want to do is put to the wayside, so, you know.
Well, if everybody feels strongly, maybe we go forward. And then after that conversation takes place with the rec council, if they decide not to contribute at all, then we just reconsider their exclusivity.
And maybe, well, yes, it's kind of a separate conversation. You know, I think if we're investing this much in the park, we have to continue to look for ways to increase the use of the park, right, and the access to it.
I agree.
I think that's fair.
I have equally concerns. I, I agree with the other council members on, for not risking losing that, that money.
If the one hundred and thirty thousand is not guaranteed, that's just in the application, right?
Yes, we have preliminary approval. We just don't have the Board of Public Works approval.
So at that point, we're talking about two-thirds of fixing it, being covered by grants or losing it?
To cut down on time, would it be better if, if one of you folks would go to rec council meeting? Because if staff would meet with rec council reps, then they have to take it back to their meeting, and that would delay the process. I'm just throwing that out there, just, you know, to try to speed the process up.
Do you have any knowing their meetings are?
I had, I don't have a clue.
I've been to one in a while, so I know.
Yeah, it's been a long time for me, too. I'll, I will reach out to them tomorrow.
Good.
And I'll, I'll start that. You know, my, my guess is, just like we can't make a decision in a vacuum immediately, they probably can either.
Right, right.
But I'll, I'll reach out tomorrow. Anything else on this one tonight?
Do we want to do anything this evening to preserve that grant money?
I think that's what we did last year.
What's the five-year mark, Kelly?
I have to think it's the end of this fiscal year.
I think you're absolutely right. I think, yeah.
She knows that, the contact knows that we're working on it, knows that we've gotten bids. Just waiting for action.
Fiscal year, meaning our fiscal year, or, or equivalent?
So the meeting with the rec council is going to come down to, do we want to put lights up or not? And then if we choose to put up the lights, how's that going to happen?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought the meeting was going to be whether or not they're going to contribute.
Would be contribution.
How much they can contribute.
That's fine. Because we've had discussions in the past with taking the lights down.
That's correct. Yeah, and we still have to worry about C field, because this is just for D field. C field poles are older than D field, so they're not as high, they're not as high. But, you know, we have to, we have to look into that.
And if the rec council says we're not helping? I'm not saying we need an answer right now, but that's something we have to think about.
Correct. Reconsider exclusivity.
Correct, that's a decision that has to be made.
See, I'm just trying to think ahead that, what are our options when we go into this meeting, or what are we really talking about? If they're not going to contribute, are we just going to take them down? We have the money. Are we just going to put them up ourselves and, or do we ask them to cover the 10% match? What do we do? Those things have to be addressed going in.
I would suggest we start the conversation with them.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just giving food for thought and preparation.
Kelly, can that eighty-five thousand, the way the grant was written, be used solely for taking them down?
No.
So if we take them down and don't replace them, then we lose the eighty-five thousand?
Correct.
And pay to take them down?
Yes, we have, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was not missing something along the way.
All right, that'll be good for now on this one. So next thing's, and I'll get you guys an email when we begin, once I hear from, I think, I think John's still present over there, but I'm not even sure. All right, questions and comments from the community? Uh, Mr. Fantone, am I coming up here? We don't want anyone to miss you on TV.
What's that?
Anyone that misses you on TV.
How you doing? My name is Dale Fantone. I am a homeowner on Monroe Street. The issue I have is my backyard is parallel with Long Lane. I have called, which is Long Lane and High Street, the little alley. I've called the office and I've even spoke to the chief. People are blowing through the stop signs at tremendous speed. My concern is not just because they're doing that, but my son gets off the school bus on Main Street and has to walk down to come home. And, and just, I called this afternoon to find out about the meeting tonight, and even tonight, when I was taking out my trash cans on the street, with me out there standing, they're still blowing through the stop sign. I mean, not even slowing down. I mean, I could stand out my kitchen window and watch them just go right on through. Now, I don't know if they're not paying attention. There have been times I've called people on their phone, just going right through, but something needs to be done. Somebody's going to get hurt, and there's, even on Long Lane, there are kids that live on Long Lane that play out there. And like I said, there, somebody's going to get hurt or killed.
Chief, is this one of the areas that's been on our, our radar?
It, it died down for a little bit, but he's right. It's picking up again.
It, it's, it's out of hand.
It's, it's an unofficial bypass, so we'll, I'll direct it forward.
Is this a lot of evening stuff, people heading north in the evening?
I, I see the little, the little zipper cars, I see trucks, you know, pickup trucks, just blowing right through the stop sign. There's no regards.
I think he's asking time of day. Is it, do you see it more in the afternoon, evening?
I see it in the evening time, because I know they're coming down Beaver to bust through the traffic, to go down York. But they go both, they go in both directions, but it's mostly going from Beaver Street towards York Street.
Is it school traffic from the school, or?
It's people coming home from work.
But I, I get home, I get home on an average anywhere between quarter after four and four-thirty, and that's when my son's getting off the bus. And I could stand, like I said, I could stand at my kitchen window and look where the stop signs are, and I could just watch them glow right through. And like I said, somebody's going to get hurt, and if, you know.
This is, it's indicative of a larger problem we're having, and stop signs kind of everywhere right now.
Right, I understand that.
And so we, we've talked, I know we've been, in the past, Dale and I particularly, have had conversations over the past number of years, not been in favor of electronic monitoring, like, but it may, the discussion may come back up at some point. As you can see, like, we're, we tripled the amount of citations and warnings.
Right.
And it doesn't seem to be having a ton of effect. So it's kind of like every time we fix it in one area, or, or slow it down in one area, and then say, okay, we got a problem over here. And you leave, people just doing it right again.
Right.
And, and we can't have, you know, we don't have a budget for fifty police to sit one of them.
No, I understand that, but.
So we, we definitely can get some focus there now. The larger discussion is what do we do?
Right.
How, how do we improve the situation long-term? Because we only, right now, right now, how we can.
Put a jersey wall in the middle of the road, block it off. So they don't, they can only go halfway down, and they got to turn around and go back. You know, I mean, something, because I, you know, if, I hate to say it, but if, if it's my kid, we've got problems.
I get it. Yeah, I get it. The, the one thing that seems to have some effect right now, those electronic signs that we have, I know, I know that's more of a speed thing than a stop sign thing. But we should, that, that was the one thing I didn't get a chance to get my priorities in for.
I've seen stop signs with the little flashing things around. I don't know if they're just not seeing the stop sign. You know, they're just, I, I don't know.
They don't care, they're just using it to get.
High, that, that could be possible.
I was just going to ask, is it clear? Because I, I feel like there's certain places along, along that might not.
Was patrolling up here, I blew through it twice. It was like, oh. So, no, you can miss that sign. It's just like the one right there at the.
Church.
Church.
Now, the one at church gets through, that's in the clear.
Constantly trying to keep that clear.
That's in the clear.
Is it something that we could look at possibly painting down stop ahead on the road?
I'll take a look at it tomorrow and see what.
I don't know. Have we painted that one in the past?
I don't know that we have of any of our town roads.
We haven't done that. We didn't, we never did that one.
Those ones in half-stemper, with the solar.
With the.
I was going to say the solar sockets.
Yeah, I just happened to see that, just a couple of weeks ago.
I know a lot of towns are doing it.
I don't know if that's going to help.
I mean, that, that may be, right, it's kind of like, how can we step this thing forward?
Right.
You know, I mean, putting up, you know.
Like I said, there's, on Long Lane, there's some kids that live on Long Lane that have to walk down.
Yeah.
Side of my son, and another kid that lives on my street have to walk down off the bus. You know, and it's, it's around four-thirty, is when the bus finally gets up there, and then they have to come down.
And I know, I know we have kids that go to the high school that have to walk home on that route.
Well, yeah, because I, once he goes to high school, he can walk, he can walk to the school, yeah.
Well, that's another issue, because now we've got kids walking on that street and people rushing to get home, too.
Especially when it gets warmer, these high school students go walk the sheets. The sport players, they'll all go down the sheets.
As a, as a short-term stress, why don't we, if we can increase enforcement?
Yes, sir.
And then why don't we, why don't we look into some of those things, the, you know, the solar to light, light up stop signs? And see if we can't get even some of these more speed signs. I know it's behind that discussion already, but at least we're saying it publicly, to get some more of these things around. And then maybe, maybe put that one on the list for road painting, which I think we're a couple of months from when we can do that still.
Yeah, I appreciate whatever you can do. I mean, it's, you know, not just concern on my son, but, I mean, that's a safety issue.
It's not a safe spot.
Like I said, I, I was out there putting my trash cans out, and they were still blowing through the stops with me standing there. And I stand there and I look at them, like, you know.
But if you're wearing this, it's something, if it's dark, it's hard to see.
No, this is daytime, you know.
No, I, I hear you. So we'll, we'll increase enforcement, and we'll start taking those steps to.
Cool. I appreciate it. Thanks.
We have one person sign up. Is there anybody that did not get a chance to sign up that would like to speak? I'll move on to committee reports. Councilwoman Miller.
All right, the only thing that happened this evening is to see, to make sure that somebody's planning on going to the next quarterly MML, which is hosted by Union Bridge, but is in Kymar, I believe, on March 12th. We just need to make sure someone is able to go to that to maintain our qualifications for Banner City.
I can probably go. I should be able to go. So we, we'll get a couple of people, all right?
As long as we have one person, we're good.
Okay. Councilwoman Puchelli.
The next MAMA meeting is scheduled for the 20th at Spargo's at noon, and there have been no updates to their website, so I have nothing further to report.
Okay. But the business expo's coming up.
I think Steve touched on that.
All right, Councilwoman Howe.
There was a young lady who decided that for Valentine's Day, they should have a craft workshop, and I know you can't see this lovely picture here, to use natural materials to make something for Valentine's Day. And she, I think she was like nine years old, and fifty people showed up at the nature center to do this workshop, and it was like a card with sticks, said love on it with a heart. It was very, very nice, a good turnout. Some of the upcoming events, we still have the Twenty Miles in 2020, the hiking challenge. They're also going to start group hikes on the first Sunday of every month at 1:30 PM. They will be at the expo, the business expo, at, on March 14th. Volunteer kickoff is Sunday, March the 15th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. And then Members' Day is Saturday, April the 11th, from 11:00 to 1:00, with an egg hunt and some other activities and food for members. And if you haven't joined, there's some papers out in the lobby. There's also a Bio Blitz, Saturday, April 18th and 19th. And the Plant Swap, which is always a good one, is Sunday, May the 17th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. They have printed up some new lovely brochures with all these activities upcoming, and they are available in the lobby. And the next thing in May is the Family Camp Out, where you can camp out overnight, May 16th and 17th, for a small fee, and you can get some breakfast and some activities and movies and things at night, which seems to be very successful. So either get on the website or get some brochures and become a friend. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Walder.
Okay, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not meet last week, I mean, last month, but they are scheduled to meet next week. It looks like we'll be busy with further discussions on the Lippi Farm annexation, so we'll be meeting, I'm sure, to talk about that. So I'll keep everybody posted.
Okay. Trent?
What you looking at me for? Might as well start with that then, okay, so, just go straight to athletics. First off, talk about the track team. Many of the runners broke several other school records and placed first, second, or third, qualifying them for state competitions. And obviously, track isn't the only team doing well, as the wrestling team is preparing for their regional duels tomorrow night. It's hosted at our high school, and the matches will begin at 5:30. And the entry fee is only $6, so I expect a great turnout, as I'm sure you'll see tomorrow, Mayor Warner.
I'll be there early.
So it's like baseball and other spring athletics are gearing up to begin training for their season. They've met with their coaches already, and I know there's a meet the coach night coming up in March. And they're ready for another great year. As for this school as a whole, the tech center is holding an open house for the freshmen of the, of our school on the 25th and 26th to introduce the programs that they offer. And the future business leaders of America Club is going on a trip to watch the Washington Wizards play on the 21st and to analyze how the owners behind them, behind the team operate. As for finals, this is kind of the month where all of them are preparing for their next performances. For the orchestra's and chorus, they're preparing their pieces for their showcase next month in hopes of receiving a superior rating, which is the equivalent of an A. And the drama department has begun rehearsing over the last month for their spring musical Legally Blonde. And if you don't know, that's where UCLA sorority president L. Woods transfers to Harvard Law, abandoning her life of luxury to chase her love and showing that there's more to her than just a pretty face. And due to the first semester being a little shorter than the second one, we still have eighty-nine more days in the school year. Eighty-nine still.
Eighty-nine more days.
And, yeah, that's all we have.
That's it.
I don't know, Trent, we're celebrating the 100th day tomorrow.
I don't know, I, I counted. I looked on the school website. We'll, we'll have to see.
All right.
But the seniors have less, right?
The seniors, I believe, only have like, I think they have eighty more days.
You have a hundred more days.
We have, we have eighty days left. Ours is a hundred.
I'll check my math.
All right, anything else for this group? A reminder, budget work session here, February 27th at 7:00 PM. Next council meeting's Tuesday, March 10th at 7:30. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, goodnight.